Good evening, members of the board, cabinet, superintendent Soto, and community. We're going to go ahead and begin with our recognitions for this evening. We do have quite a bit to get through. We'd like to start by recognizing McCullum High School student Lorena Vialpando for representing Harlandale ISD at the Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference in Florida this month. Lorena competed in the fundamental word processing category and earned an impressive 16th place out of 66 students across the nation. We're proud of her accomplishments and how she represented our district. Lorena, if you could step on up. Congratulations. And I will ask members who are getting honored, if you see your slide go up, feel free to start making your way to the podium. Join us in congratulating talented students from Harlandale and McCullum High School who recently competed in the state visual arts scholastic event. In their first year advancing to state, Harlandale High School students Susan Carases Perez and Gemma Agamis earned top scores and were awarded gold medals, while Angelina Ace Munoz also proudly represented Harlandale. McCullum High School's Gabriel Ramos qualified for state as well, showcasing her skills and creativity with her artwork in the bottom left. We're proud of all four students and the growing strength of our district's visual arts program. They're here, they're coming. Congratulations. Congratulations to students from the Jewel Witzel Center Makerspace whose film "Holes" was nominated for Best Cinematography at this year's San Antonio 92nd Film Newberry Film Fest. The event challenges students to creatively retell Newberry Award-winning books in just 90 seconds, showcasing both storytelling and technical skill. Their film was featured at the Tobin Center's HEB Performance Hall alongside entries from students across the city. Congratulations. Congratulations. Join us in congratulating Harlandale ISD's ACE LEAP after-school program and their nine winners in the elementary division of the annual Centro Cultural Aslan Superhero Art Contest. Harlandale ISD had the most winners of any school district in San Antonio, a proud moment for our students and staff. We have Emma Álvarez, Alina Valdez, Mateo Escobar, Jonas Pérez, Jaden Garza, Cameron Ramos, Kayden Cormans, Eric Ibarra, and Araceli Gutiérrez. It's everybody. There's one certificate for everybody. Congratulations.
Testing, testing. Mic test, one, two.
Mic test, one, two.
Mic test, one, two, three.
Mic check.
Test, one, two.
Mic check. Okay, we're back on. Okay, so I can have our McCullum High School area track and field join us up on the podium. So congratulations to McCullum High School's track athletes for their outstanding performances at area. Jorge Vargas, first place 400-meter run area champion; first place 800-meter run area champion; Joanna Fuentes, first place discus area champion; boys 400-meter relay team, Jordan, Jeremiah, Darren, and Jorge; and then girls relay team, Brooke, Noelisa, Haley, and Lauren. And I do want to mention that Jorge Vargas broke the school records in the 800-meter run and the 400-meter run, both from 41 years ago. If we can now have the area track and field athletes from Harlandale High School join us. We have Jermaine Ramírez, first place shot put; Michael, first place 200-meter run; Kaitlin Juárez, pole vault area champion; Fernanda Huerta, 100-meter hurdles; boys relay team, we have Norberto, Michael, Santiago, and Trishawn; and boys team 200-meter relay, we have Norberto, Michael, Santiago, and Trishawn. Congratulations. And... For track? For track? If we can have our McCullum High School softball team join us. Our McCullum High School girls softball team wrapped up an impressive run at the area playoffs in San Marcos, making the Harlandale community proud every step of the way. Congratulations to our bi-district champions on a season defined by hustle and teamwork. Congratulations. We'd like to thank the City of San Antonio World Heritage Office for visiting Gilbert Elementary to deliver copies of the new World Heritage Center Activity Book. Created in collaboration with Gilbert teacher Jessica Sandoval and scholar Anwar Reyes, the dual-language resource helps students explore San Antonio's cultural heritage through engaging activities and colorful illustrations. Guided by Monarch Butterfly and Armadillo, readers learn about architecture and the city's historic missions. Students are encouraged to stop by the World Heritage Office at 3601 Roosevelt Avenue to pick up a copy. Thank you so much. That does it for our announcements or for our recognitions this evening. Thank you. Thank you.
Soccer, track and volleyball to playoff appearances, district titles and regional success. We're excited to welcome Coach Foss home and look forward to the next chapter of Harlandale Athletics under her leadership. We do want to invite our school board cabinet and our community to our Memorial Day ceremony. It's going to take place on Monday, May 26 at 9:00 a.m. and this will be at STEM Early College High School Cafeteria. And again, a reminder to our community, our commencement ceremony dates. We have Frank DeHeda, June 3 at 10:00 a.m. at St. Mary's University. We have STEM Early College High School on June 3, 2:00 p.m. at St. Mary's University. We have McCullum High School, June 4 at noon at Freeman Coliseum. And we have Harlandale High School, June 4, 6:00 p.m. at Freeman Coliseum. Now, we have our student enrollment and average daily attendance by date. This is going to be for the last week, so starting last Monday and then going on to today. So, we have last Monday for enrollment, we started at 11,455 and that was pretty even up until Friday when we had 11,447 and then same with today. As far as ADA, we had, and again, that's average daily attendance. We had 85% last Monday, 89% the following day. In the next few days, we had 85.09% on Friday and then we had 88.88% today. And that's in comparison to 2324, which was last year. We had a 5%, a negative 5% difference on Monday, 1% difference on Tuesday, same the next day. We have more students on Thursday than we did the same time last year. And then today, we had a 0.90% difference. Does anyone have any questions about the student enrollment or average daily attendance?
Any comments, concerns or clarification needed?
Final slide is important dates to keep in mind. We have our mobile food pantry happening tomorrow at Harlandale Memorial Stadium. We have our retirement ceremony, May 22 at STEM Early College High School and that's at 5:00 p.m. We have our Memorial Day Ceremony, May 26 at STEM Early College High School. We have our last day of school, May 29, 2025, and we have our commencement ceremonies, June 3 and 4. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, guys. Any comments, concerns, clarification needed? No? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
All right, so moving on to item 4B, the board will be presented with an update on Harlandale ISD's Teacher Incentive Allotment, TIA program. Ms. Castro, and I think this is the part where Ms. Dr. Salinas is going to ask about her Thia, right?
I'm excited to be here to provide a TIA announcement to you all. But before I formally begin, I'd like to take a moment to thank each of you for your support of our teacher incentive allotment program here at Harlandale ISD. In a few moments, you will see the great impact your support is providing to our teachers, campuses and district. Without your support, today's announcement would not be possible. So, what you see here is an overview of the number of designations at the master level, exemplary level and recognized level for each of our campuses. You will also see on the second to the last column, the total designations for each campus, which range anywhere from one all the way to 19. 19 being our highest number of total designations at Harlandale High School. And on the very last column, what you will see is the total allotment amount that that given campus generated from all of their TIA designated teachers. As you can see from the ranges of allotments at each campus, many of them are in six-digit figures. The campus that takes the prize for the highest generating allotment amount is going to be Stonewall Flanders at $196,360. With all that said, we have a total of 15 teachers at the master level, which is the highest level. We have 91 exemplary teachers and 83 recognized teachers. That's a total of 189 TIA designated teachers that we have here at Harlandale ISD. In terms of range of payment, these teachers, one teacher will get the highest payment at $21,219.20 added to their July paycheck. On the low end, a teacher will get $4,212.80, which is still a pretty good amount to their July paycheck. Now, for the big reveal here, I'm proud to announce that our participation in TIA has generated a total of $2,110,571. 90% of this will go directly into teachers' pockets this coming July. I'm now honored to present to all board members a check in this amount and ask that you all come forward for a picture, please.
There you go. There you go. Ready? Go one, two, three, one more. Got it.
All right. Well, wonderful. Thank you for sharing the great news, Ms. Castro. As I know recently, our team was able to celebrate with those that earned those designations. And again, we're very pleased to see even our Frank DeHeda Academy earn those designations as well. And obviously, we're going to definitely do our best to continue to, to, to see what we can do to, to honor and compensate our staff appropriately based on the success of what they have for our kids. So, thank you, guys, everyone, for your participation. Moving on to item 5A, which is student outcomes, GPM 1.1. The number of industry-based certifications, IBCs, earned will increase to 20% by 2025. Mr. Soto, is that?
Ms. Guerrero, sir.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Guerrero, you can join us up here and you can proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Soto, members of the board. I am here to talk to you today about our industry-based certifications and accountability and how we're progressing here in Harlandale. So, I am proud to say that Harlandale ISD offers 24 different programs of study and all of which are considered very high wage and high demand. This is a huge accomplishment. This means students have a very vast variety of options they can choose in terms of career exploration and opportunities. The goal, the GPM 1.1 goal is that we would increase the number of industry-based certifications earned to, to, sorry, excuse me. We will increase them to 20% by this school year, 2025. Before I can go into those numbers, I need to describe to you all what I mean when I use the word earned. Last school year, an IBC was considered earned if the students took at least one Level 2 course or higher in an aligned program of study that they were earning the IBC in. So, that means they needed to take an advanced culinary class to take the culinary IBC to get that earned certification. In 2025, this school year, they have to pass at least two or more CTE courses for a total of at least two credits within the same program of study. That means the students need to take at least two classes and still earn the IBC for it to count for us. Next school year, it's going to get a bit more complex. They have to pass three or more CTE courses for a total of at four credits and earn the IBC for it to count for us for CCMR. That means they need to take the class, their junior year, their sophomore year and their senior year for that to count for us in terms of IBC and earned recognition with that. If we're going to go, yes.
I just have one quick question. So, they have to take all of those classes before they do the testing. They can't take them before?
They can, we can offer the IBC, but the CCMR point will not count for us unless they take three or, three classes and four credits. So, some of the classes are two or three hours long. They need to take at least one of those. Other questions?
Ms. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Muntz.
How many opportunities do the kids have?
So, I'm going to get to that a little bit later, but we do definitely provide the students with a multiple array of opportunities. All right. So, if we're looking at past historical data on IBCs, in front of you is from 2020 to 2024, how we've progressed in our total number of students earning IBCs. You can see that from 2023 to 2024, we did have a 3% increase and we did meet our goal by that point. We've overpassed the 20%. We do not yet have the Region 20 or State data for 2024, but you can see that we've had progressing measures and I do predict it to be hired next year. If we're looking at it by campus, Harlandale High School, 38% of their seniors earned an IBC when they crossed the stage last school year. This was a huge jump because in 2023, they were only at 27%. At McCullum High School, we had a bit of a stale growth, but that has changed for this year. So, in 2023, they had 31% of their seniors graduating with an earned IBC. Last school year, they had 31% and we are predicting again higher for this upcoming school year coming in. So, if we're looking at what 2025 can look at, as of April 28, when we put this presentation together, we had 3,021 total students enrolled in CTE courses, 9th through 12th grade. That's a phenomenal number. Out of those courses, we offer 35 different types of IBCs. That means the students have, well, depending on their course, their program of study, we have 35 different opportunities for them to be successful. In addition to just IBCs, because we do want our students to be very career-ready, we offer additional certifications for our students such as the Basic Lifesaver, OSHA 10, Serve Safe Food Handler. This definitely, in conjunction with their IBC, makes sure they're hirable upon graduating high school. If we're looking at the total number of seniors, you can see that these are the total number of seniors who were in, are in Harlandale. In 2024, we had 950 seniors. This school year, we have 754 seniors across the two, across all four campuses. We, out of those groups, the number of seniors in CTE this school year is 515. So, that's 68% of our seniors are taking CTE courses. The number of seniors attempting IBCs is 469. So, again, some of the seniors are in lower-level courses that don't offer IBCs and that's where you're going to see the difference in that data. And as of April 28, 262 of those seniors have earned their IBCs. And so, that gives us a 34.7% earned rate predictable for next school year as well. So, what are we doing to make this number grow? One of the first things we did as a department is we streamlined our programs of study. There was a time when kids got to just pick a bunch of courses and as you heard me describe what equals earned, they have to stay on a track to be successful for that point to count. So, for every single program of study, we created basically a four-year plan for those students. And we say you need to go from year one to year two, to year three, to year four. And that's going to make sure they're the most successful for earning their IBCs. It helps counselors with making sure they're in the correct courses and that those points count for us. Another program that we're going to be rolling out next school year is families. If students in CTEs will all receive what we're calling an IBC one-pager. For every single one of the 35 IBCs we offer, we have outlined the skills that are necessary. We put pertinent information. Some of our IDs require kids have social security numbers or state IDs. And so, we're putting that out there from the very beginning so that families are aware of that. And we're going to keep that message consistent all throughout the student And we're going to keep that message consistent all throughout the student's time in high school. And so this one-pager will be able translated into Spanish and available for our families as well for each IBC. Other things the district does to support and increase IBC success is we provide multiple opportunities for our teachers to attend specialized training in their content areas. So if they need more expertise, we're, we're making sure that they get that. We're creating vertically-aligned plans so that the entire program, throughout the entire program, one of the things we talk about is we shouldn't be talking to seniors, their senior year, about getting IDs. It should be started from the beginning. In this program, you're going to earn this IBC, you're going to need X, Y, Z, and keeping that message streamlined throughout the student's time in high school. Where we are requiring that all teachers hold the IBC of the course they are giving, if it's allowed. Some vendors don't allow it, but for the most part, if you're going to be offering a welding certification, you need to also hold that certification. And we're creating a marketing plan to educate the community and parents on CTE pathways and the requirements for IBC completion. We also have an array of student-centered supports, so we pay for students to take the IBCs, including retests once the students have shown work towards reviewing challenging concepts. So we continue to pay for our students to be successful as long as they're showing the effort to make those gains and things like that. And we provide students the opportunity who need assistance with getting state IDs, including legal IDs for several of our things. So we drive the students to DMV to get IDs if they need it. And we help them with all of that as well and fingerprinting. So what can the school board do to help us? One of the things we really need to do is regularly communicate the value of our CTE pathways and industry certifications to all of our community and stakeholders, promoting the awareness with our families so that they understand the importance of IBCs for college career, you know, and military readiness. And we really want to start encouraging our families to get state IDs so that those students are eligible for earning their IBCs. And so we're trying to say you don't have to wait for a driver's license. You can go as early as fifteen to get a state ID and that just helps us all out in the long run. In terms of CCMR and industry-based certifications, IBCs, in a, you know, they bring us the accountability point, but they also can yield us some additional money or bonus outcomes. So if a student is college-ready, meaning they've earned their TSI, both math and ELAR, and they earn an IBC, that yields us some additional money. And so we definitely do encourage students to pursue IBCs. A fun one with this one is in order for the outcome bonus, it does not need to be a part of a program of study. So we're able to offer additional IBCs such as the Part 107 Drone Certification out of the Makerspace and other IBCs like that. If you have any questions, you can contact me or Noverto. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Cavazos.
Thank you. I do have a question and this may not be the place to, for you to answer it and feel free to tell me, you know, tell me that. But I know in the past, when you've come to present, I always ask, how many kids are enrolling? How many want a CTE training or want to enroll in it? One of your last comments or at presentations was, we have a waitlist for certain career opportunities. At what point do you determine we need more classes because the waitlist is long? Or we have to tell X number of kids, I'm sorry, but there's no room for you? How do you handle that? Is that a question I can ask, Mr. Soto?
I would, I would definitely say we're constantly looking at what students are interested in. You know, some of looking at how they balance out, really making sure, you know, they'll waitlist their freshman year and then those kids pull out the next year. So what we're doing to try to advocate a little bit for that is having a lot more conversations in the middle school about what students are selecting. Because we do offer twenty-four programs of study and we need them to stick with it all four years, we're really saying, is that really what you want? Because what does happen is every kid wants welding freshman year. So they get into welding, but half of them will drop out. And so we are moving up the waitlist, but I think the more we're having those conversations with family about what is your, what is your lifestyle going to look like? What is it you want after high school? Then we can help navigate and counsel those kids to where they need to be in.
And another quick question, if you don't mind. Have you noticed if you all are already implementing that conversation in the middle schools? Do you notice that you're getting more positive feedback than I really don't know yet?
Yes, but I do not have enough data to give you like an actual answer on that. We just started implementing it about two years ago when I took over this position and we're still needing to weed out some of the changes that we've made to get that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. When, when you're going to the middle schools and presenting this to the parents, are y'all showing videos and some sort of, so parents can get an idea of what you're talking about? And what it is in both in English and in Spanish?
So, no, sir, we don't have videos yet. That's one of the things that we are going to be working on and I have a plan to roll out kind of throughout the district.
Mr. Chair, please. Okay, are you going to create those videos with our own kids?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I, I want to commend the district for ensuring that the teachers hold the certification in their fields. I think that knowledge base is really critical and the credibility with the students is, is important. So I appreciate the district moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Any other comments, concerns, or clarification?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Luna?
Only concern here, when these, um, on two thousand twenty-four, you had nine hundred fifty total seniors and then went down to seven hundred fifty-four, well, why was there a decrease? But I also noticed the attempts went hot, went higher, so is this just a phase of the program or?
I, I could not tell you, that's the actual, like, how many seniors we have. So that means last year, that's how many juniors we had. That's the total number of students. The, the nine fifty to the seven fifty is the total number of students, seniors in the district at this time. I, I don't know why it dropped.
Yes, sir. This is more of a whole district.
Okay, yeah.
Number, yeah, this is not totally just CT. Mr. Luna, as the demographer study shows that there was going to be a decline. Eventually, what happened is we did pick up some of our, our kids in other grades, but the kids that are senioring out, that are graduating, it's what's happening is we're losing more kids than what we're bringing in for the previous years. And that's what's causing, that, that's the decline in enrollment.
To answer the second part of your question with the why there's more attempts is we really have, as a department, put an emphasis on all students get the opportunity to earn an IBC. And so keeping that very clear, we used to have teachers go, well, these kids don't want to do it. And it's like, no, they're going to do it. And so just by creating that message, I do believe the amount of attempts will continue to rise.
Anything further on that, Mr. Luna? Anyone else have any comments, concerns, or clarification?
Mr. Chair.
I want to commend you and Mr. Noverto, working with Ms. Casey and Ms. Littlefield on picking these numbers up. You know, considering that our total seniors dropped about two hundred kids and then for it to increase the, the amount of children to about, to a hundred and seventy that were tested, I commend you for your efforts. You guys keep doing it and, and keep improving these results. Thank you, man.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. If anyone else, anything else, then I guess I can share. So based off of that, I appreciate the embedding, the information and, and allowing us to have further clarification when it comes to these processes that we have established. And it's great to know all the programs of study and, and knowing that we are visiting the middle schools and we are communicating to the parents. That's something that not necessarily every district does. So it's commendable for us as a team to, to see that come together and come to fruition. In addition to that, having our middle schools actively, you know, promote those pathways. Again, when we're asking, you know, our kids actively engage in this conversation, I'd say maybe not. Because in reality, some of our kids are still, I don't know answers. So the reality is, is for us to continuously do this throughout. I know in my campus, and it's mainly because my wife is the one steering it. She's providing those one-on-one conferences, those conversations. And that necessarily doesn't happen at every ISD or every school. But those are things that she feels is necessary for the, the kids to get. One, the, the seriousness of the situation and know this is the next four years of your lives. We need to figure this out because a lot of times, you know, kids aren't bringing back their, their choice cards. There, you're having to get it signed, you're having to call parents. It's a lot of work other than just exposure to this information. So some of these things aren't necessarily in place, but we just have to know the reality of our situation, know that there's other factors that come into play. And I'm glad to know that we are trying to address every situation to ensure that our parents are aware of what's available and also pushing them to understand that and also our kids. Because a lot of times, once we do get them to something that they, they like, it, it's going to be a game changer for them. So I'm glad to see where we're putting that in there and I, and I appreciate you guys presenting that information to us. Mr. Soto?
Mr. Chair, Board of Trustees, Ms. Megan, didn't we have a couple of visitors from different districts come? They didn't even, these superintendents didn't even tell me they were coming visiting Harlandale. And so that's the biggest form of flattery is we had a couple of superintendents come visit what we're doing here at Harlandale and they didn't even tell me that they were stepping on the district grounds. I just found out this morning, Ms. Megan. Next time they come visit you, ma'am, let me know, all right?
They did tell me they were texting you when they showed up, so.
It's great to know and it's great to lead with innovation, so thank you, guys. And, and I'm. Yes, Ms. Reese.
I just wanted to say congratulations on, you know, a, a successful CTE semester. Last week, I did attend the barber battle, which was super cool. I mean, this is hip-hop music playing. We had other districts involved. We had, you know, clippers were buzzing, ring lights were on, these kids were on their A-game, cutting hair. So it was so much fun to just witness that. So great job on, on that event and hopefully next year we can make it bigger and invite other schools.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Wonderful. Anyone else have any comments, concerns, or clarification needed? All right, well, I guess we'll proceed to the next item, so thank you, Ms. Guerrero. Moving on to item five B, Chief, is there anything there to report for us? You can make your way down the aisle, please.
Board members, Mr. Soto, just to know, we are done with the audits. We ended up with Harlandale with zero findings and Adams has zero findings. So congratulations. So we ended up with ninety-five percent as a district, which is amazing. I just want to commend our EMO, Coach Borstier, our officers, principals, our staff, our students for making sure our students are safe. So, any questions?
Appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll see what TA changes next year, so up in the air.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll be ready. All right, moving on to item six A through E, would anyone like to make a motion for the consent items?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Ms. Cavazos.
I move to approve consent items A through E.
Uh, we have a motion to approve item six A through E. Second by Mr. Luna. I don't believe there's any need for comments, concerns, or clarifications. We'll proceed to the vote, please. All right, we can go ahead and close the vote. Our motion carries, moving on. So here we have individual items, which is seven A, declared winners for single-member districts one, two, three, and four will be given the oath of office and all required procedures as followed or have been followed. And winners will assume their position on the Board of Trustees. Mr. Flotis, and again, luckily, we have no, no transition on that end, so that's great to hear. So, Mr. Flotis, when you're ready and, uh, and I guess we'll just go in the sequential order, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. So during the May fourteenth work session, we did canvass the board, board elections. And at this time, we will have the four candidates that were elected to come up and do the, the oath of office. So we will start with single-member district one, Mr. Juan Mancha.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mancha, when you're ready, congratulations again.
And I do believe Mr. Mancha had just have one individual.
Thank you for everything you've done, Juan, for the South Side, for Harlandale, for my family, for all the students and for the years that have known me. Thank you for this honor.
Thank you, brother.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I
I, Juan Mancha.
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear.
or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office
execute the duties of the office.
of Harlandale Independent School District, single-member district one of the State of Texas and want to, and will, to the best of my ability
and to the best of my ability.
preserve
preserve.
protect
protect.
and defend the Constitution
defend the Constitution.
and the laws of the United States
and the laws of the United States.
and of this state. So help, so help me God.
So help me God.
Time to make it official.
We'll move on to a single-member district two, Ms. Erica Salazar. Ms. Salazar, if you can please raise your right hand. I, Erica Salazar, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of, of Harlandale ISD, single-member district two, the state, of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Luna?
Single-member district three, Mr. Louis Luna. Mr. Luna, if you can please raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I, Louis G. Luna
I, Louis G. Luna.
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear.
or affirm
or affirm.
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office
faithfully execute the duties of the office.
of Harlandale ISD, single-member district three
Harlandale ISD, district, single-member, single-member district number three.
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas.
and will, to the best of my ability
and to, to the best of my ability.
preserve
preserve.
protect and defend
protect and defend.
the Constitution and laws
Constitution and laws.
of the United States
of the United States.
and of this state
and of this state.
so help me God.
so help me God.
And for single-member district four, we do have Ms. Norma Cavazos. Ms. Cavazos, if you would please repeat, raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Norma Cavazos
I, Norma Cavazos.
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear.
or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties
that I will faithfully execute the duties.
of the office of Harland Of the office of Harondale ISD
Of the office of Harondale ISD.
Single-member district 4
Single-member district 4.
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability
And, best of my ability.
Preserve
Preserve.
Protect
Protect.
And defend the Constitution
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Alright, thank you and congratulations again to our returning colleagues. Again, a big congratulations to you four, and appreciate all the hard work you guys have done. And thank you for the families and friends along the way, because I'm sure you guys have done a great deal. Is there anything before we move to the next item that maybe any of our four recently re-elected folks would like to share before we go? Mr. Mancha?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to thank the community of Harondale for believing in this district. A lot of us came back because that's what y'all want. We've done great work together. We plan on doing much more great work, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, anyone else like to share anything? Okay, so we'll go forward to the reorganization of Harondale ISD Board of Trustees Officers. I will preface it this way regardless of how it goes. We'll just move this around if it goes some other way. That way we don't have to do so much moving around. In addition to that, also, we, well, I guess we'll follow the script Mr. Cruz gave, and I guess we'll go group by group or person by person.
Yeah, just for the record, Juan Cruz, I just gave you a script that follows the Robert Wilson's order, and if you go to page 2 of the script, at the very bottom, I think that's a very important note that I could read for the record, and it says, "If more than one person is nominated for an office, the chair takes the vote on the candidates in the order in which they were nominated. The first candidate to receive a majority vote wins." Okay?
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to do like if somebody wasn't getting nominated, get a subsequent motion or anything like that? We'll just go down, we'll just make nominations and go down the line?
Yeah, if you could say, for example, you could say, you know, then who's nominated for president, and if somebody nominates Juan Cruz, and then somebody else, I nominate Jerry Soto. So once no, there's no other nominations, then all those in favor of Juan Cruz to be the president, if Juan Cruz gets four votes, the majority, then he's the president. If he doesn't get four votes, then you move on to Jerry Soto.
Okay, alright, is everybody pretty clear on that? It's just kind of the same process as making a subsequent motion if necessary. So I guess at this point, and I'm glad we clarified that, because that's what I wanted to kind of reference before we proceeded. So I will now open the floor for nominations for the Office of Board Presidents. So would someone like to nominate such-and-such person?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Ortiz?
Yes, I would like to nominate Norma Cavazos as Board President.
Okay, so we have her nominated. Do we have, Ms., yes, Ms. Salazar?
I would like to nominate Ms. Becky Reese as Board President.
Okay, are there any other nominations for Board President? Mr. Mancha?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Louis Luna as our Board President.
Mr. Luna, also, okay. Any other nominations? Or you, did you want to decline, is that what you said?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I'll decline.
Okay, alright, sorry about that, Mr. Mancha, but thank you for the consideration. So we'll have just two, are there any others that would like to open up the floor? Alright, so do we take it from the order, Mr. Cruz, then? Yes, if there are no more nominations, then we'll go ahead, because remember, we do this electronically, so.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have to do it old school, okay? So we'll go ahead and we'll go, I guess, for Ms. Reese first, and then we go to Ms. Cavazos.
The one
The first one, Ms. Cavazos, okay, and then we go to Ms. Reese. Alright, so we, all those in favor of Ms. Cavazos to serve as Board President, say aye. Yeah, please raise your hands. Okay, so we have the four votes there, alright.
Motion carries.
Okay, so congratulations, Ms. Cavazos, you are now Board President. Welcome back. So I guess you can proceed with the duration of the officers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you're still Mr. Chair until tonight. We'll share it, we'll share it, we'll share it. I want to now open the floor for nominations of the Board Vice President. Any nominees? Yes, Mr. Mancha?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Reese as our Vice President.
Ms. Ortiz, did you want to say something?
Yes. Ms. Chairwoman or Ms. President, Madam Chair, I nominate Louis Luna.
Okay, we are going to take the vote on Ms. Becky Reese for Vice President.
Could you ask if there's other nominations, maybe?
Any more nominees? No? Okay, so we're moving forward with nominate, with the nomination of Mr. Louis Luna to stay in his seat as Vice President.
No, the one that was nominated first.
Oh, Becky Reese, yes, okay, Becky Reese, yes. So Ms. Reese, we're gonna vote on Mrs. Reese's nomination for VP. Hands, please. Okay, all those in favor for Becky Reese to be Vice President, please raise your hands.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Ms. Former Secretary now Board of VP. Okay, moving on to Board Secretary. I am opening the floor for nominations for the Office of Board Secretary, any nominations?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Reese?
I nominate Erica Salazar for Board Secretary.
Thank you, any other nominations?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mancha?
I'd like to nominate, nominate Ms. Ortiz as Board Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Mancha, okay, we will start our voting
Any more nominations?
No more nominations. We will start, begin with Ms.
Salazar.
Salazar as the Secretary of the Board, so hands up, all those in favor, hands up, please.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Salazar. Anything else we need to do? Okay, so moving on, consent item 8. I'm sorry, yes, individual, did we do C already? No, we gotta do C.
Mr. Chair, I misunderstood the last vote, so where do I go there?
This is a legal question.
I, I'm, yeah, yes.
That item back. Yeah, at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so at the next regular board meeting, we are going to bring
Just the Office of the Secretary.
The nomination and vote for the Office of Board Secretary, correct?
Correct, but for today, Ms. Salazar is the Secretary of the Board.
Okay. Agenda item 7C.
Think about this.
I did, 7C, agenda item 7C.
So Madam Chair, I know we've been working on this part and I've been helping our friend, Mr. Luna. I know Mr. Serna from when it comes to Bernie ISD, I don't think he was looking to continue, so I think the idea is for us to nominate Mr. Luna, who was interested in taking that role, right? I know, I guess Mr. Rizales was the one working with this, so.
You make a motion?
So that's the thing, right, that we're doing.
Ms. Luna, are you still interested in that position?
Yes, I, I filled out the paperwork, it was submitted.
Okay, Ms. Moreno, do you want to do a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Luna as the Tasbe candidate endorsement for Region 20, Position D.
A second.
So we have a motion presented by Mr. Moreno, a second by Ms. Reese, and now we get to do our little clickers.
Well, I'd like to share something just before.
Of course, go ahead.
So, Ms. Luna, just make sure you're familiar with what's going on and the avenue of different aspects related to it, okay? So. But I'm just saying, just moving forward, because there's a good chance that you'll probably get that position.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can we open the vote, please, on agenda item 7C? Okay, agenda item 7C, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item 8, convene in closed session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections 551.071 through 551.084. Do I have a motion to convene in closed session?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Ortiz?
I move that we convene in closed session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections 551.071 through 551.084 to discuss items 8A through 8D.
Is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno, we will go now, open the vote for agenda item 8. Okay, agenda item 8A carries, motion carries, so we will be convening in closed session. It is now, you have the time?
Okay, folks, thank you for being patient and waiting for us. It is 8:51, we are back in open session. Agenda item 8A, no action taken. Agenda item 8B, no action taken. Agenda item 8C, no action taken.
I think we have to make a motion, right?
Yeah, but we didn't make action there.
Yeah, I think recording that there's no action, but you're gonna go to 9A.
Exactly, yes. Agenda item 8D, no action taken. So now we're moving to 9A. Do I have a motion for agenda item 9A? Okay, I'll go ahead and, oh.
The motion would just be to approve the resolution as presented.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion, yes Madam Chair. I move to approve the presentation and action as presented in closed session.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Okay, we're gonna take a vote on agenda item 9A. Can we, yes, Mr. Luna.
I can't remember, we already discussed this in open session. What the community about this is about.
Sure. It's about basically school districts that have teamed up together. And if Barlandale ISD would like to do the same, is to join a class action lawsuit that is right now going on in California against social media companies because of the harmful effects that social media has had on students across the country, including this school district, exposing them to harmful materials. And at the increased costs that it costs the school districts to hire additional counselors to have firewalls and other expenses related to the proliferation of social media without any type of guardrails across the US.
Alright, thank you, Mitch.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cruz on what he just informed our community?
If I may, Madam Chair. Just in regards to this item, I think it is in the best interest of the team or best interest of the district and the team to ensure that we do what's appropriate to hold whomever is accountable for providing or creating these situations for our youth that are, we're seeing a dramatic uptick in a variety of social emotional issues. So, I think it's fair and I think it's an appropriate thing to hold those companies or huge conglomerates accountable for their actions.
Mr. Cruz, will we have something on our district website from your firm? If our community wants to learn more about this, will we have something, Mr. Soto and Mr. Cruz, on our website that we can refer our community members to?
Yes, we have provided the school district with a PowerPoint presentation. We will obviously remove anything that's turning client, but really for the most part, I think by tomorrow morning we can have it. And then you can have that PowerPoint presentation on your website, which would give you and anybody else really a good synopsis of this litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, and thank you, Mr. Soto. Okay, so we are going to open up agenda item 9A for vote, please. Okay, vote closes. Agenda item 9A, motion carries. And because that motion carried on agenda item 9A, we will need to vote on 9B. Is there a motion? And Mr. Cruz, after we do the motion in a second, can you also talk a little bit about this, please?
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to approve and adopt the contingency fee of legal services agreement with JCA Law, PLC, and GERA LOP authorizing board president to execute such agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno, do I have a second?
I second.
I'll second with, by Luna and Reese. Okay, let's move forward with the vote. Or before we vote, Mr. Cruz, would you please talk to us in the community about this?
Yes, this is the law firms that will be prosecuting on behalf of the school district, representing the school district in court in the class action litigation that the district just, the board just authorized administration and the board to join that class action lawsuit. The fees are, as explained in closed session, any recovery either through settlement or judgment, 65% will be for the school district, 35% for the lawyers. And of course, because this is a class action lawsuit, there are expenses by a class action team, which would be 8%, right, of, that may fluctuate, but that would be incurred by the law firms. And the 2% which are expenses would be incurred by the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz, and just reiterate for us, please, so that we all have an understanding and the community has an understanding, contingency fee means what?
Contingency fee basically means that the school district does not pay an hourly rate. The school district only pays at the conclusion of the litigation based upon a percentage of whatever is recovered either through judgment or settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Any questions or comments, Ms. Ortiz?
So, if y'all lose, will the school district pay any fees?
No.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, let's move forward with voting for agenda item 9B, please. Okay, agenda item 9B, motion carries. Agenda item 10, adjourn meeting, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Reese.
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Okay, let's open up the vote to adjourn tonight's meeting, please. Okay, although it was not unanimous, we are still have a quorum and a majority of the vote. So, it is 9, I'm sorry, 8:58, tonight's meeting is adjourned, thank you.